I'd like to call this meeting the Westland City Council Order. We begin with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilwoman Melissa Sampe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clark, roll call.
Councilman Gobert.
Present.
Councilman Hersberg is absent. Pro Tem Londo.
Here.
Councilman McDermott.
Here.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Present.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Present.
President Hart.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. For announcements and presentations, we have Police Chief Judge Drusick.
Thank you, Council President. So as we approach the Fourth of July holiday, I want to take this opportunity to remind our residents the rules regarding fireworks. Under Michigan Fireworks Safety Act and also the Westland City Ordinance, fireworks are only permissible 12 days out of the year. During the upcoming holiday season, fireworks are only permissible from July, I'm sorry, from June 29th until July 4th. On those days, fireworks are only permissible between 11:00 a.m. and 11:45 p.m. Because illegal fireworks can be so frustrating to so many residents, the Westland Police Department strictly enforces the law. Each violation can result in a civil infraction up to $1,000. So please adhere to these rules. We have dedicated officers that are working who will take enforcement action against the violators. If a neighbor of yours is violating the firework ordinance, you may call the police department at 734-722-9600 to report the violation. Please provide a specific address. It's difficult for us to locate the source of fireworks without a specific address being provided to us. Thank you, Council President.
You got it, Chief. Thank you. We'll now move to, excuse me, questions or input on the agenda. This section will allow a person to be recognized only at the beginning of the meeting to address the council pertaining to items that are specifically on the business agenda. Questions asked may be responded to during the agenda item following a motion and support from council. Is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my left? I see no questions on the agenda. We'll move to the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
Comment.
Motion by Councilman Gobert, supported by Councilwoman Rakowski. Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Are there any changes to the consent calendar? Is there any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
Council has approved the following consent calendar items. Approval of minutes of the regular meeting held June 6, 2022. Approval of bid for professional dog park construction services. Administration recommended the low bidder Solei Building Company in the amount not to exceed $245,600, subject to council authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign a contract approved by the city attorney and executed by the vendor. Approval of bid for services and software related to benefits administration. Administration recommended the loan bidder, Benteck Benefits, total amount not to exceed $33,600. Approval of emergency purchase of playback system from Studio Tyson LLC for the community media department, total amount not to exceed $14,068. Approval of professional services agreement with Higura Health Incorporated to perform social worker services for the Westland Police Department in the amount of $45 per compensable hour. Approval of agreement between the City of Westland and the Municipal Service Bureau for Westland Ice Arena Management Services for a one-year period commencing July 1, 2022, ending June 30, 2023, amount $162,000. Approval of agreement between the City of Westland and the Municipal Services Bureau for Golf Course Management Services for a one-year period commencing July 1, 2022, ending June 30, 2023, rather, amount $126,000. Approval of agreement between the City of Westland and the Municipal Service Bureau for Crossing Guard Management Services for a one-year period commencing July 1, 2022, ending June 30, 2023, in the amount of $243,000. Approval of agreement between the City of Westland and the Municipal Service Bureau for Park Rangers for a one-year period commencing July 1, 2022, ending June 30, 2023, in the amount of $91,000. Approval of the City Hall Security Guard Contract with NAIAS Security LLC for a one-year period commencing immediately, ending June 30, 2023, in the amount of $50,000. Introduction of Budget Amendment through May 31, 2022, for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Wave procedure, declaring an emergency due to time constraints to allow the introduction and adoption of the budget amendment through May 31, 2022, for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022, in the same meeting. Adoption of that budget amendment through May 31, 2022, for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022. Adoption of a prepared resolution to approve expenditure of American Rescue Plan Act appropriation funds for transformational improvements throughout the city. Administration is authorized to advance and procure the listed appropriation amount of $8 million. The last item approved on the consent calendar today, approval to extend deadline for payment of 2022 summer taxes without additional penalty until August 31, 2022. Moving to the next item, payment of voucher.
Support.
Who is the maker? Councilwoman Rakowski, supported by Councilwoman Sampe. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business. Item one, approval of minutes of study session held June 14, 2022.
Motion by Pro Tem Londo, supported by Councilwoman Sampe. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? I have to roll call that one. Roll call.
Councilman Gobert.
Yes.
Councilman Hersberg is absent. Pro Tem Londo.
Yes.
Councilman McDermott.
Yes.
Councilwoman Rakowski.
Yes.
Councilwoman Sampe.
Yes.
President Hart.
Yes.
Motion passes. New business. Item two, approval of site plan for proposed veterinary clinic, 36391 Ford Road, southeast corner of Ford and Carlson. This is planning department number 1532D. Planning Commission recommends approval of the proposed site plan contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Motion by Pro Tem Londo, supported by Councilman Gobert. Mo?
Thank you. The site here is located at the southeast corner of Ford Road and Carlson. It's Zone CB4. That's our vehicle service district. And it's also located in the Ford Road overlay district. The applicant is requesting site plan approval to construct approximately 5,000 square foot veterinary clinic on the site. That's outlined in red on your screen. The existing building that you see on your screen does not exist. The parcel is currently vacant. That's an outdated aerial that I have up on the screen. The veterinary clinic that exists to the east of the site, right here where I have my cursor, oops, sorry, will be demolished and replaced with this one that we're discussing today. Site access is proposed via two curb cuts, one at Ford Road and one at Carlson. The zoning ordinance requires 15 parking spaces. The site plan provides for 24, including bicycle parking in the southwest corner of the building. The proposed building will be constructed using a variety of materials, including masonry, brick veneer, and metal paneling as the primary materials, and composite wood veneer as accent materials. There's a comprehensive rendering set in your package, but this is essentially what it will look like from the Ford Road side and the Carlson side. The plan proposes screening and landscaping along Ford Road and Carlson, also throughout the parking lot, and also will include a 36-inch DDA compliant decorative fence with masonry piers. The brick color of the fence that's proposed is going to match the brick color of the proposed building, kind of a darker brick color than we're usually seeing on Ford Road. There is dumpster enclosure proposed in the rear yard at the southeast corner of the site. It will be enclosed by a masonry wall similar to the building design. There is site lighting proposed that will be in compliance with the lighting ordinance. There's a photometric provided in your plans. All of the bulk requirements, including setbacks, height, and lot coverage, are compliant with the zoning district. And the planning commission did review this at the June 1 planning commission meeting and is recommending approval. The petitioner and architecture and design team are present in the audience today, and I'd be happy to answer the questions you have. Thanks.
Thank you. The petitioner would like to come up to the lectern. How you doing?
Good evening.
Is there anything else you'd like to add before I ask the council if they've got questions?
Basically, we're eager to start building this building.
Fair enough.
Yeah. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. How are you?
Anything from the maker?
Good evening, gentlemen. Thank you for this investment in the community. For those that don't know, this was a former property of the Downtown Development Authority that was sold, and looks like it's going to be a fantastic addition to that corner. I'm really excited about it. I did watch the planning commission meeting. There were some issues that came up, but it sounds like you guys got those worked out. So I'm going to be in support. I'm looking forward to seeing this on Ford Road.
Thank you very much.
Anything from the supporter? Councilman Gobert?
Yes. I too just wanted to thank you guys for moving forward with this project. I know it was a difficult process to go through originally, but, you know, and I just wanted to also thank the members of the DDA who were fully supportive of this project. It's going to make a huge impact on that corner, and I look forward to seeing you guys open.
Likewise, I'd like to thank everybody on the DDA, especially Aubrey. She was very helpful in helping us put it together and move forward. Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Sampe?
Yeah, I also wanted to thank you. It's a beautiful building. What's the name of the business?
It's, oh. The name is, yeah, it's a Griffith. The existing business is the Griffith Veterinary Hospital.
Okay.
And that's going to be...
It's going to transition over?
No, it'll still be the Griffith.
The Griffith. Okay, so, perfect.
And this is the architect designer, so don't thank us for the design.
Yeah, it's beautiful. So, thank you. I mean, it's great to see Ford Road being built up, and I also will be in support this evening. So, thank you.
So, any other discussion? Councilwoman McDermott?
Well, good evening. Thank you, Council President. Good evening, guys. I just want to say thank you for the investment in the community. One quick question. When do you anticipate breaking ground and ultimately having this completed?
As soon as possible.
As soon as possible. We're currently working through some of the engineering, which Charlie can speak to.
So, final engineering, construction drawings are mid-July. That's the target right now. So, soon after that, you know, as soon as we can get into the ground, we want to start.
We'll have to submit for a plan review and all those things with the building department. Go from there.
Great. Well, thank you, guys, for your investment in the community. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Rakowski?
I might as well join in here. No, again, I would like to echo everyone's sentiments, and we appreciate your continued commitment to our city. And it's just a fantastic-looking building, and I think you're really going to give Ford Road a nice shot in the arm as far as development goes. I think it's just going to be just a beautiful, beautiful addition. Thank you.
Well, I'll echo all the comments from my colleagues. Couple questions, though. Did you draw your inspiration from City Hall when you came up with that design? We're just curious.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
No, it looks good. The other thing is, when do you, breaking ground, so we do have the Blues Brew some barbecue, it's the first weekend of August, so that's a really busy time. Do you think you'll be breaking ground during that time or right after?
Early August, that's probably going to be challenging.
Yeah, it'd probably be a little bit after that.
Okay. We're just, there's going to be a lot of people, a lot of parking going on, so I just didn't want that to be a complication for you and all of our guests that come near to town, as well as our residents. And secondly, just, when you are in the middle of construction, please keep mindful, that is Tatten Park. It's really busy. There's a lot of recreation there, as well as the neighborhood, and everybody on Carlson there. Keep it down to a dull roar, please. That's all I could ask. So, but I'm really excited to see this come there. The property needs it. Beautiful building, and I'll be in support as well. Is there any other discussion from the council? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carried unanimously. Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. New business. Item three, approval of site plan for proposed building addition for an oil change shop, 32911 Warren Road, southwest corner of Warren and Benoy. This is planning department number 1126B. Planning Commission recommends approval of proposed site plan contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations, and with the condition that all required variances are granted by the zoning board of appeals. Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Gobert. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Pro Tem Londo. Mo?
Thank you, Council President. The subject property here is located at the southwest corner of Warren and Benoy, in a Zone CB4. The applicant is requesting site plan approval to renovate the existing building and construct in addition to accommodate a three-bay oil change shop in the proposed 1,772 square foot space. Site access will remain as it exists today with one curb cut at Warren, one curb cut off Benoy. 11 parking spaces are required, 12 are proposed. The proposed building will be constructed, well renovated, and in the addition, constructed primarily using concrete and metal paneling. This is a rendering of what the building will look like. The existing screening wall is in poor condition at the south of the site behind the building, and is proposed to be completely removed and replaced with a six-foot-tall compliant masonry screening wall. A landscaping plan is also proposed in compliance with the zoning ordinance, so the entire site will get a refresh, not only the building and wall, but also all the landscaping, both on the Benoy and Warren sides as well. The proposal does comply with all of the bulk requirements, with the exception of the side yard setback on the west side, and also triggering non-compliance with the height as well. So those two variances are required from the zoning board. The petitioner is on the July ZBA agenda, and the planning commission is recommending approval subject to variances being granted by the ZBA. The petitioner and business owner's architect is in the audience today. His name is Shaheen, and I'd be happy to answer the questions we have, too. Thanks.
Thank you, Mo. Can we have the petitioners come to the lectern, please? Same drill. What can you tell us that Mo hasn't told us? Anything else you want to offer?
Not really. I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have.
Very good. I'll open up to the maker at first. Councilman Gobert? Anything from Pro Tem?
Just a comment. The petitioner's not here, but can you thank him on our behalf? It's going to be another great addition to that corner. That one sat vacant for a while. I know the residents in here are going to be happy, and I'm excited for it.
I really did the message. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sampe?
The building looks beautiful. Actually, it's near my home. I had a question. I actually threw the chair to Mo, though. In terms of the entry, Warren can get backed up very quickly. So is the entrance only, just looking at the site plan, only on Benoy, or is there an entrance off of Warren as well for entry? Because I know there currently is, but that corners can back up.
Thanks for the question. There is already a curb cut on Warren, and that is going to be used for the new oil change shop. I suspect that the Benoy curb cut will be primarily used because that's where the entrance is more convenient for the oil change. But like I said, the two curb cuts, one here and one here at Benoy, will be used as they exist.
Okay. So in terms of, is it double entry then? So you can enter off Benoy and off of Warren?
Yes, you could.
Okay. That can get congested. Okay, thank you.
I'm going to add clarification to her question. Can you bring up the drawing where it shows? So there's another drawing that showed that one right there. So I'm led to assume that that's the vehicular traffic. The actual entrance to the oil change will be off of Benoy, and they will primarily exit onto Ford Road. Looking at those, Warren. Thank you. Listen to what I'm saying, or thinking, not what I'm saying. But I mean, that's, that would lead me to believe that they're going to enter off of Benoy, Councilwoman.
That's what I was suspecting. If you have exit from the bays, I would assume it's maybe like a one-way in, one-way out. Is there going to be signage that marks that, or it looks like that corner is very tight? So it could get very confusing with people coming and going around.
So right now, the proposal does not call for traffic circulation to be one way in, one way out. There's no signage on-site to direct traffic of that. It is more convenient for customers to enter off of the Benoy curb cut just because of where the oil change entry bays are located here in the rear of the building. But a customer could certainly enter off the Warren curb cut and traverse back to the rear of the building if they choose to.
Do you have anything else, Councilwoman?
No, thank you.
Excuse me, Councilwoman Rakowski.
Thank you, Council President. Through the chair to Mo, you know, that is a congested, I see what you're saying. It is a congested corner. Has there been a traffic study done? There's an awful lot of vehicle accidents that occur at that intersection, especially people trying to turn against traffic out of the gas station that's across the street there. So, you know, would there be a time to have a traffic study as well as implement a no-left turn off of that Warren Road exit? I can just, I don't want to look too far into the future, but it just seems like it's going to be mighty dangerous right there.
So, our zoning ordinance does require traffic studies only for drive-throughs. I can't speak on behalf of the property owner, but I'm willing to guess if I spoke with police department this week and we had several issues in this corner, that he would be willing maybe to put some site circulation signage on the site. I can't promise, but I'm willing to have that conversation.
Yeah, I would really love for you to have that conversation with our police department. We don't need to have people getting into accidents. Other than that, I mean, it is beautiful, and it's a long time coming for that corner to be developed. But that's just the only trepidation I have is with the traffic and turning left off of, you know, out of the Warren curb cut, that that could potentially cause an issue.
Council?
Yes, thank you.
Councilman McDermott?
Well, thank you. Thank you for coming out here. You know, I know the petitioners in presence, you may not be able to answer this, and maybe it's better directed through the chair to Mo. This is going to be just an in-and-out, quick oil change shop, correct?
Correct.
So no long-term auto repairs. And then through the chair to Mo, one of the issues that we do have with some of our, I'm going to say this nicely, but some of our auto repair shops also treat their facilities like a used car lot, and they're lined up with cars all around the premise of the building, to the point that there's almost no parking, and you see broken down or cars being sold all around the premise. I'm guessing this will not be approved for this site, correct?
Yeah, that's been an internal administrative policy, as well as you are likely aware from the zoning ordinance update, that we are not interested in allowing new major auto-related facilities through our thoroughfares. This is strictly an in-and-out, like you said, oil change shop.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thanks, Mo.
Great. Any other discussion from the council? So I would echo, if you could take it back, Mo will work with that, too. The traffic circulation, I think, is probably something that should happen, as well as the no-left turn. I agree with my colleagues. It's one concern I had. But other than that, really excited about it. I live close I live close to that place, too, and I'm happy to see some development going on, thank you. So one more time, any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carried unanimously, congratulations, good luck.
Thank you.
New business, item four. Approval of site plan for proposed enclosure of existing vacant bank-drive-through area. 36700 Ford Road, north side of Ford, east of Newburgh. Planning department number 2258. Planning commission recommends approval of the proposed site plan contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations.
Motion by Councilwoman Rakowski. Supported by Councilwoman Sampie. Mo?
Thank you. The subject property is located at the southeast, no, that's not right, I'm sorry, I have the wrong case up here. Well, the property is located on the north side of Ford Road. It's the current site of the Park West Dental Clinic, just east of the Texas Roadhouse. The petitioner has been operating, I'm sorry, the business owner has been operating at the site for quite some time, I believe a little bit under a year. And the ATM drive-through window related to the bank operations, which previously existed, is still there. The business owner slash doctor wants to enclose the space and make it part of the usual floor area to potentially lease it out for a pharmacy or other complimentary medical-type office business, and therefore generating the need to enclose the space. This requires site plan approval from the city council, which is why the petitioner is here today requesting that. The business owner is not here, but the architect is, he's in the audience. That's pretty much it, the dimensional requirements are all still being complied with. There's no changes being made to the existing footprint that you see there up on the screen. There's no other site modifications being done either. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mo. Petitioner, could come up to the lectern?
Definitely.
How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, do you have anything to offer?
My name is Michael Tsakov, I'm the architect for the project. So basically, as Mo had described, we're enclosing the current drive-through. It's about a 1684 square foot area, currently existing roof column, so we're basically gonna infill it and enclose it. It would be a complimentary medical-type use, something that's complimentary to the dental site. Probably wouldn't add too much more parking needs there. We have actually added four extra parking spaces in the revised site plan. So we feel it's a good addition to the area and to the surrounding area as well. It shouldn't impact any of the neighbors in any negative way. So if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, sure, we'll go to the council, see what they got. Anything from the maker? Councilwoman Rakowski.
Good evening, thank you for representing the petitioner and also your commitment to the area. I love seeing these businesses expanding their footprints and adding new amenities. Throw the chair to Mo. Hi, Mo. He had mentioned that we aren't going to be adding any parking. Taking in respect to the size of the addition, should it not be being used by the dental office? What would be the required parking for an additional business on that site?
That is a good question. The site is overparked by quite a bit. We modified our parking requirements for medical office a couple months after I first started for one parking space per 250. So this is, I'm sorry, let me run the number real quick.
Sorry to make you do math.
No, it's good, it's okay. So this requires about seven parking spaces. The site is, like I said, overparked already. It can handle and still comply with the requirements. I just don't have the full calculations with me that it also include the existing building right now. But I did do that math, and it does comply with that requirement.
Oh, that's fantastic, and I really love to hear that. You know, I just didn't want you to be going through this exercise of adding a potential business and then not having, you know, parking accessibility. That would just really be terrible. But I'm in support of it, I think it's a fantastic idea.
Okay, and I did have some of the information on the parking as well. So based on the ordinance, I believe, you said it was one per 200. So basically, we have, required parking is at 29, that's with the added space, and we're actually providing 38 spaces, so we're in excess.
Great, thank you.
The bench lady was up here.
I know, look at that, thank you.
Anything from the supporter, Councilwoman Sampie?
No, I just want to thank you for being here today. I also would like to echo Councilwoman Rakowski's sentiments as well. It's always great to see new businesses and expanding, especially medical as well, too. I think that we have a few, but it's always great to kind of see that expanding of medical and access to medical care in our city, so thank you.
Thanks. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously, congratulations, good luck, thank you.
Appreciate it.
New business, item five. Approval of site plan and special land use modification for proposed outdoor seating for an existing smoking lounge. 7900 Middle Belt at the southwest corner of Ann Arbor Trail. Planning department number 1051J. The planning commission recommends approval of the proposed site plan contingent upon departmental requirements and recommendations, and subject to the following conditions. One, the outdoor patio area closing at 10 o'clock PM. Two, no outdoor music, no entertainment of any kind, other than the smoking of hookah.
So move.
Motion by Councilwoman Sampie? Supported by Councilwoman Godbout. Mo?
Thank you. The subject property is located at the southeast corner of Ann Arbor Trail and Middle Belt Road. The applicant was granted site plan and special land use approval on February 16, 2021, to operate the smoking lounge at the property. Today, the business owner is requesting to modify this site plan and special land use approval to construct a 624-square-foot outdoor patio that will include a pergola-style canopy. The proposed pergola will be constructed using wood and vinyl, and will be approximately 12 feet tall. There are no other modifications being proposed to the existing site. The planning commission did hold a public hearing on June 1st, and is recommending approval of this, subject to the two conditions, that the outdoor patio close daily at 10:00 PM, and no outdoor music or entertainment of any kind, other than the smoking of hookah be conducted within the open space, outdoor space area. The outdoor seating area will be constructed in the front of the building, in this location here, outlined in red. This is the approximate area shown from a site plan view, Ann Arbor Trail, Middle Belt, the front of the building. And this is just an elevation drawing showing the pitch of the roof. The two sons of the business owner are in the audience today, representing him. He's out of town, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, that's all I have, thanks.
Thank you, Mo. Can the petitioners come up to the lectern, please? How you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. Do you have anything you'd like to offer that Mo didn't tell us, or?
He seemed to cover a lot of the bases. I can't wait for you guys to see it, hopefully it gets approved.
All right, well, we'll see if the council has any questions about it. So we'll go to the maker first, Councilwoman Sampie?
No questions, just thank you gentlemen for being here. It's great, because I know the business just opened, so it seems like there's a need for expanding already, which is a great sign. So thank you very much for being here, and I obviously supporting it this evening.
Thank you. Councilman Godbout? Good to go. Is there any other discussion? Councilwoman McDermott?
Just wanted to say thank you for your continued investment in the community. You know, when you guys first opened, and until today, we've gotten, and I think Mo can probably attest to this, no complaints from residents or anybody that lives, you know, in back of that. So you guys have been good stewards to the people that live around you, too, so we're excited to have your continued support and investment in this project. So, thank you.
Thank you. Pro Tem?
Good evening, thank you for the reinvestment. I did want to speak, there were a few complaints, so I just want to make sure that you guys do keep the noise down. At the planning commission, a gentleman came that lives on Ann Arbor Trail, and said that he's heard noise from the existing location. So I know the conditions are no outdoor, the outdoor patio closing at 10:00 PM, and no outdoor music or entertainment of any other kind, other than smoking of hookah. I did have a question, are you guys enclosing it all? Like some of the other neighboring communities have?
Sorry.
Are you enclosing it all, like the sides, like putting like plastic or anything around the sides?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, like I said, we did have a few complaints, so we'll just hope that you guys can keep the noise down and have people enjoy their hookah and nice atmosphere.
Is there any other discussion from Councilwoman Rakowski? No, you're good to go. All right. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carried unanimously. Congratulations, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
New business, item six. Confirmation of reappointment of Mayor William R. Wild as delegate to the Central Wayne County Sanitation Authority for a one-year term effective July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023.
Is there a motion? Motion by Councilman Godbout, is there support? Support by Councilwoman Rakowski. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously.
New business, item seven. Confirmation of reappointment of Steve Smith as alternate delegate to the Central Wayne County Sanitation Authority for a one-year term effective July 1, 2022, through June 30, 2023.
Motion by Councilman Londo, supported by Councilwoman McDermott. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any dissent? Any dissent? Seeing no dissent, motion carries unanimously. All right, we will now move into public comment. Everyone speaking before the council should do so in a civil manner. Speakers shall refrain from abusive or profane remarks, vulgar language, disruptive outbursts, threats, racial slurs, or other conduct that interferes with the business meeting. Personal attacks on council members, the administration, city staff, other speakers, or members of the public will not be tolerated. The clock will start upon the first words of the speaker and will not stop while the speaker is recognized from the floor. It is the speaker's option to ask questions at this time, and the person questioned may choose to respond during the speaker's allotment of time. However, the clock will not be stopped once it is started. The clock will continue to run until the speaker is completed or their speaking time is exhausted, whichever comes first. Is there anyone on my right? Is there anyone on my right? There you go, Ray. There you go.
Just calling myself Ray Updates, so always on the go. Anyway, I do have some good news for our disability concerned board. Now, we got full membership. We have, there is four, counting there's five of us all together now. So one of them is Deborah, and the other one is Ryan. And we also have great goals for the year, and hopefully we can accomplish. So I'm looking forward, and we have to have a team like that, because one can't just do it, it takes like a team to do it. And that is my passion, and I was notified as a chair, and I really appreciate the mayor's office letting me know about that, so it's really nice. Anyway, so the next thing is, I saw something today, I was sitting out there in the lobby, out there in the city hall, and we got the events. I think it's wonderful. Tells you everything what's going on around Westland. So that was kind of great, I'm making notice about that one, too, even for accessibility, or whatever one who's ever up here, take a look at that, you know? It really helps a lot, what's going on out there. And anyway, the number one key thing here is water. What I mean by that, it's gonna be hot the next two days. Hopefully, I know Westland does have cooling centers, and it's important that people stay cool, and stay hydrated, please. Don't get a heat stroke, thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Is there anyone on my left? Mayor?
Good evening, council, how you doing? Good. I just have two things. I understand that the city works on contracts with its employees, but with Juneteenth being a national holiday, I hope that next year, that the City of Westland steps up to the plate and does their part. We would greatly appreciate it. Also, this was such a peaceful meeting.
I agree. Is there anyone else in the audience? Anyone else in the audience? All right, seeing none, I'll close. Public comment and move to comments from the administration. Deputy Mayor, let me get your timer here.
President, just a couple of quick things. Mrs. Wilson brought up the fact of Juneteenth. We have been in discussions about that, and we'll see something to council in the future. We'll work with our chief diversity officer on that, and certainly we'll have something next year, but like I said, we're working on it now, so thanks for bringing that up. And as Ray mentioned, we do have our cooling centers opening back up with the extreme heat coming. Just go to the City of Westland's website, and you'll see all the locations and the hours, but we do provide water, and we also have charging stations at those locations, so you can charge your electronics. And the last thing would be, is just a quick thing that councils probably were, but our pickleball courts have now opened at Stottlemyre Park, and I heard that Councilman Godbout already beat our parks and rec director, Kyle Mulligan, in the first pickleball court match, so that's all tonight, thanks.
Thank you, anything from the attorney's office today?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and begin council comments tonight with Councilman Godbout.
Thanks. The pickleball courts are open, and they're in great shape, and it just shows that anybody can beat anybody of any age. Even somebody that's half their age is susceptible, so. It's a great sport, it's a great activity, it's a great way to get outside and be active, and the courts are beautiful, they're in great shape, and it's, you know, I'm sure the demand up there will be very high for those pickleball courts. And it was nice to see that we had four businesses either doing complete rebuilds of their facilities or modernizing and updating their facilities within the City of Westland. Just shows the popularity and the investment that people continue to make in this city. And then finally, I just wanted to thank the chief for bringing up the fireworks ordinance again, and the fact that we do meet the absolute minimum of what the state allows. And I've had a couple of exchanges with residents already over it, and my only recommend is to contact your state legislature and your state senator to try and further restrict the number of days and the hours that fireworks can go off. But we are at the minimum of what is allowable based on state law, so. That's all I have this evening, thanks.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sampie?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Lori, for bringing that up this evening. I did want to mention that the community and recognizing today, I think it's really important that we also recognize it here in the city, and I hope that moving forward in the future, maybe we can observe that as a federal holiday, because it was observed on many different levels. I also wanted to just say Happy Father's Day, or belated Happy Father's Day to my colleagues on the council, those watching at home, and also to my dad, Steve, who I'm very lucky to have in my life. I wanted to touch on the trash issue, it was brought up last time, and I feel at this point, I've been working with Paul Ruthenberg from Priority, and I feel we're at a very normal fashion for just the complaints that we're getting. So he worked very quickly, anytime that I sent him issues, he worked very swiftly to get those resolved. At one point, I was speaking five to six times a day, now it's just a couple times a week. So I just wanted to let the residents know, if you have any other issues, you can reach out. I'm on Facebook, Councilwoman Melissa Sampie, or you could call my cell phone, 734-637-2078. Just a couple thank yous, as you guys will probably see on Facebook, the DPS team has been working really hard. I just wanted to recognize them for all their hard work in the infrastructure projects that we have planned. They really are a class act department. We actually saw them recently helping a senior changing a tire. So I just wanted to thank them for just working very swiftly in all types of temperatures, pretty much anytime. pretty much anytime they're out there working. I wanted to thank the Westland Police Department for their first-ever event, Understanding the Basics of Traffic Safety. I brought my son Gavin out there, he was very, very nervous. I think that he did very well, but I think it was really informative. I think that you guys had a really, really, really great, smooth program planned, and I'm really hopeful that next year, residents, I think they maybe found out about it late, but I saw them commenting, saying that, hey, I wish I would have known. But I think it was really excellent for the young drivers and maybe those that just have anxiety on the road. So I wanted to thank you because you guys are always doing wonderful things in the community. Also, I was at the Westland Really for Life that took place on Saturday, June eleventh. I attended the opening ceremonies, and I wanted to congratulate Miriam, Katie, and all the co-organizers. It was very moving. They've raised over forty-six thousand dollars on their way to their fifty thousand dollar goal. So it was a very, very emotional event for a lot of people, and I think the attendance, it was very well attended. Just to kind of recap, too, so I know that we have the ozone spray park, I was at the ribbon cutting, and it was very hot, very, very hot. But I wanted to thank the Westland Police and Fire Department for being on hand. The city directors were out there as well, so thank you for your commitment to just always being out there, you're passing out goodies and food and smiles. So I had a couple residents that asked me a little bit more on Facebook, I wanted to highlight it, that it is open every day from eleven A M. to seven P M., actually through Labor Day, but it's an awesome way to bring your kiddos out there. You can get your passes at the concession stand and go and cool off and spend a day. So it's great to see those families out there and just enjoying, just enjoying the sun and just the community. So just wanted to recap and just say thank you for everyone that has reached out with comments and concerns. You always can reach out to me, but I wanted to wish everyone a happy and safe Fourth of July. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, July fifth, due to the holidays, so I hope everyone is safe and gets to celebrate with their family and friends, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Next, we go to Councilwoman Rakowski.
Thank you, Council President. Really not going to spend a lot of time rehashing things that have already been addressed, like our cooling centers, just for a point of information on those, when it feels like ninety-eight degrees or higher out, that's when the cooling stations go into effect. You can find a list on the website, you can call City Hall, City Hall is one of those, and there are charging stations and bottled water, like the deputy mayor had mentioned. The H two O zone is always an option as well, and it's from eleven A M. to eight P M. daily. And then, other than that, there's just so many things going on this summer. We are going to have a concert series coming back to our central city in Tatten Park, so that'll be enjoyable, as long as with our blues brews and barbecue. But there's, every week, there's the farmer's market. So, you know, with the prices of groceries going up and the stress being put on our local farmers, it's always great to be able to do our part and visit the market and go directly to the source and get some fruits and veggies. And the St. Joseph's Hospital has a program, it's called the Power of Produce, which is an excellent program for your children. They can enroll, they get a token, and they have the opportunity to pick out a produce item every week. They get to exchange their little tokens, so they're learning a little bit about commerce that way, too. But the best way to get your kids to try something new is by letting them pick it out. So having that option is just really cool, and I know my son really enjoys it, and it's really neat to watch him make some good, healthy choices. So with that, happy Fourth of July, please stay safe, please try to consider your neighbors, and celebrate respectfully.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman McDermott?
Well, good evening, and thank you, Council President. Couple of thank yous to start this evening, as my colleagues have mentioned. I wanted to thank Kyle and the entire team, really, our police department who's out there, fire department who's out there, the DPW crew, and all the department heads who worked at the really great Family Movie Night kickoff. It was a huge success, a couple hundred families out there between the H two O zone and the Family Movie Night and things like that, really bringing a community together. It was really great to see, so thank you to Kyle and his team of Park Rangers. Thank you to the police and fire who are out there keeping people safe, and all the department heads who worked the event and made it such a huge success. I want to thank Devin, Kyle, and Vic for all the work they put into making the H two O zone, the brand-new splash pad, a big success, all the work that they did in procuring the contracts and the work that went into that. The maintenance work that we know Vic is our facilities director is going to continue to do, and then Kyle and his Parks and Rec team for working with Devin to coordinate that and get that done. So a lot of excited faces out there at the new splash pad, and I think that's going to be enjoyed by families for, really for years to come. I want to thank our police chief, Jeff DeRuzik, for his continued partnership. It was mentioned tonight briefly in the consent calendar with Higera Health. I think that's a great partnership that we have here in the city with a social worker and Higera and the PD, so thank you for his proactive work on that issue there with Higera. You may have had the chance to hear about or even attend our study session on the Marshall Plan for converting the former Marshall Elementary School to a recreation and community center. So we're going to have more updates on that as we go down that pathway. Tonight was step one of many to make that dream of bringing a recreational center back here to the city a reality, and just want to thank all my colleagues and a great study session that we had the other day with the team at the YMCA, Wayne Metro Action Agency, the administration, it was really professional, we got a lot of good ground covered and questions answered, and I wanted to particularly thank my colleague, Council President Hart, who right out of the gate mentioned what we were all thinking in terms of an aquatics facility. It's something that we've all thought about, residents have told us about that they want to see at Marshall, and he brought it up without even any of us having to ask a question about an aquatics facility there, and really excited to potentially have something there as like an indoor splash pad or whatever that may end up being, but thank you, Council President Hart, on that. Couple of other things real quick, as my colleague mentioned, it is Juneteenth. It would be nice to have an event honoring that. For those of you who are unaware of what Juneteenth was, in eighteen sixty-five, it was General Gordon Granger of the Union Army who told enslaved people in Texas that they were newly liberated, and it was their celebration. It was the celebration of that liberation on Juneteenth. It's a great day, but also a tragedy that it took well over a hundred years for the full right to vote and full civil rights to even approach coming into effect. But if you're wondering what Juneteenth is and why it's a federal holiday and why it's so important, it was the celebration of the liberation of slaves, and in particular those in Texas who were told by General Granger of the Union Army that they had been freed and liberated. Just a couple of other things real quick, we are closing out the month of June, this is Pride Month, so to all those in the LGBTQIA community, happy pride. I've got my emblem on here for you, standing in solidarity with you. And then happy Father's Day to, or belated Father's Day to all the dads up here on city council and all the dads in the administration and across the City of Westland, and especially happy Father's Day to my dad, who is also named Mike. And as always, if you need anything, you can reach out to me on Facebook at Council and Mike McDermott, or you can call or text me anytime at two in the morning at seven three four eight nine zero two one four six. Thank you. Treat each other with kindness and respect, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Councilman. Proton, you're next.
Thanks, President Hart. Just a couple of things tonight, I'll try to blow through pretty quickly here. A lot of items on our agenda tonight, some may have gotten glossed over, we had about fifteen items on the consent calendar. We did approve the bid approval for the dog park, which did come in a little bit more than we had budgeted for, but working with the administration, they were able to resubmit the bid process and came in a little bit higher than we wanted, but we're hoping to have a fantastic dog park here for our community. Lot of other things on there, Marshall was touched on. We did have a study session on Tuesday of last week, which I thought was a great session, over two-hour session, very collaborative, a lot of folks in the room, we actually had it in the council chambers, there are so many folks here from the various organizations, from the YMCA to Wayne County to Wayne Metropolitan Action Agency, and then Plant Moran Crescent was also here, so I appreciate the Council President also bringing up the aquatic center. Think that'll be a great addition to our community. Just a couple of quick things from our packet, just to tell some folks on the timeline of what this will look like if we're able to move forward with this. So tonight, we pledged the funding for Marshall up to eight million dollars, not to exceed eight million, we're hoping to come in significantly lower than that. June, August, we'll have a memo of understanding for the YMCA and Wayne Metro. October, two thousand twenty-two, the draft leases for YMCA and Wayne Metro. October twenty-two, draft purchase agreements to the Wayne West End School, Wayne West End Schools, excuse me, community schools. October to December of two thousand twenty-two, the bidding process for proposed improvements. And then November, two thousand twenty-two, they'll execute leases for the YMCA and Wayne Metro. December twenty-two, execute purchase agreement, and then December twenty-two, city council will approve construction bids. And then April twenty-three, we will commence with construction. So our city attorney's office is going to be swamped, so I'll quit talking here soon so he can get working on that. Happy Father's Day to all the fathers in the room, and all the fathers in the community. And Juneteenth, I also agree, I had today off for my job as well, so I'd like to see the administration, I know I talked with the mayor and MJ and Council President Hart recently on that, to meet with the diversity board and also the new chief diversity officer to talk about whether it be a celebration or a day off here in the community. The community gathering movie night, what a wonderful, wonderful event. It was extremely, extremely hot out there, but I think we had the most people we've ever had for a community event, and that's just me personally, I stuck around until nearly the end, and I want to thank all the staff, the mayor's staff, and everybody that was there working. It was a hot one out there. I think, you know, with the rising costs nowadays, you know, it's more important than ever to have a free event like this in the community for folks to come out and bring their families and enjoy themselves, and boy, did they come out. So I appreciate everybody that came out, we had no issues other than the heat, so. Also want to thank the police department for the understanding the basics of public safety, I also came out for that, brought my niece, she didn't get arrested and neither did I, so that was a good thing during the traffic stop, but no, that was a great, great event. They did a simulated traffic stop for new drivers to just educate them on the process. Really, they do a mock traffic stop, and then they tell them what they may have done wrong, or, you know, some tips of what they could do. So I thought they did a great job. I tried to be a little fidgety in the passenger seat to make it a little more awkward, but our police officers are very professional here, and they did a great job with that. Last two quick things, they didn't taze me, no, actually. The trash issues, you know, Paul Ruthenberg was here from Priority Waste at the last council meeting, and I, too, was one that was constantly in communication with him, and my calls and texts have went down to maybe a couple a week where it was like four or five a day at times talking to him. So, you know, while we're going to have a few stops here and there that get missed or issues here and there that I have issues with, you got to remember there's twenty-eight thousand stops in the community, so you're going to have an issue or two here and there, but it's a remarkable improvement from where we were, where we were a few weeks ago. So other than that, I want to say thanks and have a safe and happy Fourth of July.
Thank you. Real brief today for me, because everybody's covered everything else, I'll just agree. Deputy Mayor, get that Juneteenth solution over us as soon as you can, so we can get that done and taken care of, I appreciate it. Thank you, chief, for talking about the fireworks ordinance, appreciate it, we talk about it every year. Everybody at home, just remember, just consider what it does to some of our veterans and our pets, okay? And if you don't need any other good reason for it, to go ahead and be respectful, that's a good enough one for me. It should be good enough for you, too. With other than that, we'll just talk safety. Like Ray said, if it's hot out, drink water. If you're playing with fireworks, regardless of what I've asked you to do, at least do it safely. And other than that, drink milk, don't run with scissors, have a good holiday. Is there a motion to adjourn?
I don't know, I'll support it.